Row call please.
Mayor Conneball.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Here.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Here.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Here.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Here.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Here.
City Attorney Terry Hurst.
Here.
City Administrator James Fincham.
Here.
Thank you, Tina. It's also good to see Regina with us tonight.
She tries to escape every week.
He's up here twisting my arm to do that, so I wouldn't have done that under normal. But it's always good to see you. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the meeting of August the 14th, 2018. You've had a chance to look at those. Do we have a motion to approve as written?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion, any corrections? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Under Proclamations and Recognition of Citizens by the Mayor, first I'd like to call on Rob Watkins who has a presentation or presentations that he'd like to make.
Hello. Good evening and thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to do this. Back in April, there was a group of us veterans that got together and put together a committee to dispose of some flags that we had. Turned out there were over 500 of them and we ended up with five barrels out there. When we put out the call, we'd come to the city council meeting and asked for help and we got some really good help. We noticed that there was extra presence from the police who helped keep all the traffic going. We had an estimated 300 people show up for the event. And so we wanted to come in and thank a few people tonight that were, came out and actually burned flags for us. They manned the barrels. They were there and they were there supporting veterans not being politicians. And that was the great thing about it. So tonight, let's see, Chief, we have one for you for the City Newport Fire Department. They put a truck on station the whole time we were there and they also gave us a lot of really great advice for how to do this thing without burning the sidewalks up. That way we kept the county happy, especially the sheriff. Alderman Steve Smith.
We thank you for coming out and being part of this and help supporting this organization and hopefully you'll be there to help us again next year because they want to do this as an annual event.
Thank you.
Okay? And for Vice Mayor Profit.
Sir.
We thank you for coming out and everything you do for the city and all the support that you give us for this thing. Really appreciate it.
Thank you for your lead. Very, very grateful.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Alderman Mike Hansel. I can't say enough about what Mike did. He was involved with our committee meetings. He does a lot through the chamber as well, but he was there to support us. He gave us the words we needed to get in here, to the city and give the support we did. So Mike, thank you so much. We look forward to working on other projects with you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. One item that I had wrote down here and I forgot to do it, I think it would be in order for us to have another moment of silence in remembrance of Buddy Don Ramsey, who was the chief of police here for, I don't know.
About 24, 25 years.
About 24, 25 years and passed away just a few weeks ago. And let's just have a moment of silence at this time in memory of him and his family. Next item is the proclamation for WNPC 40th Anniversary. And who all's representing WNPC? You'll come up to the podium. Forty years. I'm gonna read this. Ready? I'm gonna try to read it accurate and professionally. I'll make sure I can announce all the broadcasting words. We do appreciate y'all's work, but y'all already know that. The 40th Anniversary of WNPC in Newport, Tennessee. Whereas WNPC signed on the air as an AM station for the first time on September the 30th, 1978, in a shopping center off of West Broadway in Newport, Tennessee. And whereas the original owners of the station were Max Johnson and Millard Oakley, who hired Wayne Harris as the station manager and Ray Snyder as the news director. And whereas the station moved to its current location on the corner of Graham and Linden Street in 1988. And whereas Wayne Harris became the sole owner of WNPC in 1990, where he later obtained WNPC's FM license in 1992. And whereas Bristol Broadcasting Company purchased WNPC in March 2004 from Wayne Harris. And whereas Bristol Broadcasting Company owns and operates WNPC in Newport, Tennessee, with 12 employees, including news director Ray Snyder, who has been with the station since its inception in 1978. And now therefore, in order to pay tribute to WNPC of Newport, Tennessee, to celebrate their 40th Anniversary, I, Conneball, Mayor of the City of Newport, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim September the 11th, 2018, as WNPC Day and commend all citizens to recognize and support WNPC and their 40 years of service in Hop County, Tennessee, and the surrounding counties. In witness whereof, I am here and too set my hand and affix the seal of the City of Newport, Tennessee, the 11th day of September, 2018, accurate and professional. There you go.
One more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Conne, before you sit down, can I get one more?
Thank you.
Can I get one more good one?
Yes, sir.
She said she wanted a good one.
One more. Thank you, Conne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't usually do this at a turn, but I want to congratulate WNPC and I want to tell a little story. We all know who Ray Snyder is. We all know who Jim Chopper Phillips is. Jim's family, love him like a brother. And Ray, over the years, I've grown old with him. I can remember as a young deputy, this Ray Snyder guy come knocking at the sheriff's office door and wanted in to get the reports. And I didn't have any idea what that was supposed to be about. I was just a kid myself. And I've got to watch Ray's daughter grow up. I have since got to meet his grandchildren and it is an honor to have worked with them throughout my entire career. And I just want to give them accolades for that.
Next item is a report from City Administrator James Fincham.
Mayor, for once, I have nothing to report, so we can move on.
I'm gonna take something in your slot.
All right.
Very brief.
Have at it.
I know the community, there's been a lot of concern about the panhandlers at the street corners. We're going to, and Terry, you correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to try to follow what Knoxville does. If there's a busy intersection, we're going to put a sign up that says, "No Panhandler", because the law says it cannot interrupt traffic flow and there can be no harassment. But we are having traffic flow interruptions, especially at Wiggles. So we're going to be looking at that to try to stop that in the busy intersections.
Also, that said, I talked to the folks at Wiggles and Mr. Wiggles, Bill, had brought up the same thing. He wanted to know what he could do if he'd be allowed to put a sign on his property which said, "No Panhandling or Asking for Money" and if we would enforce it. Are we allowed, and he can do what he wants to, he's on property, but are we allowed to go onto his property and enforce a sign that he wants put up?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
That ordinance provides that no panhandling will be done on private property or private businesses. Please do so.
We're gonna, we're gonna correct that problem. Okay. James, wow. Okay. Appointment of Boards, item six, consideration of appointment to the Regional Library Board. Pat Mason's turn. What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve that appointment.
Second. Yeah, okay, yes, I didn't, I didn't see that part there. That is to put, let's go back and redo this. The Library Board has nominated Linda Hampton Parker for the city's trustee to replace Pat Mason. So we need a motion to that effect.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item seven, any reports from the Tanner Preservation Alliance?
Eric, we don't have a call out. I'm sorry.
No, this'll just take a second. I don't need anything other than maybe a blessing or a condemnation. I've talked to Mr. Fincham about this. So the narrative of who we use as an architectural firm, we went through the Michael Brady Group. We did not, we were not pleased with the experience with them. We voted, the board voted to terminate the contract about this time last year, I believe. We're going to hire another architect to complete the construction supervision as well as consultation during the bidding process because I'm not qualified to do that. So we do have to have somebody that can do that for us. We voted, I think, last month to hire Elizabeth Esen Architecture. So meeting with her and discussing just how all this stuff works, I've never rehabbed a building, so I'm learning as I go as well, but architects are not necessarily comfortable answering questions with someone else's drawing. So we were sort of at the point of hire her and maybe have to pay her to redo work that the Michael Brady Group had done, but she recommended maybe trying to talk to the Michael Brady Group and seeing if that, see where, see where everything went wrong. And the fellow that is the, has been the lead on the county jail project, he's the other person I talked to the most from that firm. I reached out to him. I've been having ongoing discussions. He, the people that had worked, a lot of the people that worked on the project with us before are no longer with the firm. So I say all that to just, we're, we're good with it if you guys are good with me to negotiate possibly rehiring the Brady Firm. If I'm, if we're comfortable, if staff is comfortable with their approach to it this time and by next month I'll have proper resolution to rehire them. But if anybody's against that, we don't want to do it, then I can change course or, but the, Ms. Esen recommended that we approach Brady and talk to them and see where, if maybe we could repair the relationship, and they seem very willing to do that. I have a meeting with them tomorrow if you all are comfortable, maybe possibly pursuing that.
I trust your judgment. I've been looking into this for quite a while. I don't have any problem with you.
Anybody got a problem with it?
Okay. I will have an update next month, possibly a resolution either to rehire the Brady Firm or we'll, once we get over this hurdle, we're ready to bid the project and I know that. A lot of people are very happy once we get to that point with it. So, yeah, one, one last little hurdle and I think we're moving forward pretty quick after that. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Gary.
If we don't go that route, it basically boils down to it's going to cost us a lot more money and it's, it's better to try to work it out than spend more money just to, for work, to redo work that's already been done. So we see no point in that. And as he said, some of the folks that we had problems with have moved on and so we're open to try to rebuild that relationship.
Okay. Okay, let's move on to old business. Item A is consideration of the second reading of ordinance 2018-13.
Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance for the record. It's the second reading. It's ordinance 2018-13, an ordinance to amend the City of Newport Municipal Code Title V Municipal Finance and Taxation, Chapter 3 Purchasing Policy Section 5-304 Purchases of 10,000 or of more not submitted for bids, adding to item seven per Tennessee Code Annotated 12-3-1208.
Do we have a motion to approve on second reading?
I'll make the motion to approve the second reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item B, consideration of second reading ordinance 2018-14.
And Mayor, that's ordinance number 2018-14, an ordinance of amending the annual operating budget and capital program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, fiscal year 2018-2019.
Do we have a motion to approve on second reading?
Motion to approve as written.
You got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? I hear none. Item C is consideration of the second reading ordinance 2018-15.
Mayor, that's ordinance 2018-15, an ordinance amending the City of Newport Municipal Code Title V Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter 3 Beer Board, Section 8-303 Terms of Maintenance.
Do we have a motion to approve on second reading?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. We have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. On to new business, item A, consideration of resolution 2018-13 authorizing the City of Newport to participate in the TML Driver Safety Grant. Do we have a motion to approve?
Okay, go ahead. I just want to say, Mayor, that's a, that's an annual, annual and sometimes semi-annual grant that we apply for that allows us to check the driver's licenses of all employees that operate vehicles to make sure that they've got a clean driving record. The insurance wants you to do that and they provide monies for that, but you just have to go through the motion of applying for it.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item B is consideration of resolution 2018-14 authorizing the City of Newport the approval and submission of a multimodal access grant to the Tennessee Department of Transportation. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Got two motions.
And one of them ought to be good.
Yeah, okay. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item C, consideration of resolution 2018-15 authorizing the City of Newport to apply for Tennessee Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternatives Program, or the TAP program. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none.
Mayor, just for the record, just so there won't be any confusion, the first grant is to, to try to put in crosswalks downtown as part of the revitalization project. And the other is to extend the River Walk that we're trying to, we're working to start at the far end now and at the park-to float facility and work our way back towards City Hall and also to go from City Hall possibly on down to the, to the trailhead at the site beyond the annex. So, but those are.
I know several people, Mr. Fincham, has given permission.
Yes.
Start working on that. We've been talking to several landowners and it's taken a long, I talked to Mr. Doctor there.
Yes, so that, but just for the record, so folks would know what that is.
All right, thank you. Next item is consideration of Farmers Market Grant, fiscal year 2018-2019.
Again, that's just, that's an annual grant we apply for that assists with marketing for the farmers market each year.
Okay.
I appreciate what you all do down there. I think it's grown every time that you look around. You've all done a real good job there. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your attendance.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed is no. I hear none. Item A, discussion of work by NUB in storm drain repair work downtown Newport. Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Not much of a discussion, just want to, especially with the rain that has come down in force here in the last while that, you know, the drains backed up just a little bit, but this is more an informational discussion by me to let people know, you know, it's amazing to me that people say they don't listen to the radio, they don't read the newspaper, they don't see the Facebook pages where they, their lack of information. I put in your all's packet a correspondence and I think Mr. Clint Hammond's NUB has been very aggressive in putting out updates for the media for what's going on. The bottom line here to say, and these pictures, aerial photos that I've got for you guys is for your use when you, people that want to discuss it. This was presented to be by, by NUB, shows what's been done, where they're at, and what's left to be done. The bottom line there is this plan by NUB and working with Mr. Carver was, was well, well planned and it's been executed just the way that it's been planned. Talking to Mr. Ray and collaborating with him just a little bit along with Gary Carver, NUB is planning to be done with their work by the end of October as planned. Following up with Mr. Carver and the city coming in and starting their drain repair work and according to Mr. Carver, that's probably a 60 to 90 day process of getting that done. So when this thing started, there was hopes of T-Dot hating in the spring of 2019 unless weather becomes a big issue or some other things become an issue during the winter, I think that plan will be executed as prepared. So the reason I gave this to you is just for information only and I'm a picture guy myself, but I appreciate Clint Hammond's giving me a thread of emails and Gary as well doing some research for me as well. So that's my discussion on that for you guys to utilize.
Thank you, Jeff.
Mr. Ray, you tell all the people I do appreciate the jobs you've done, the extra work you've done and stuff, really trying to get it done. Tell me, appreciate it.
Okay, the last item on the agenda is, there's one item under bids, a consideration of bids for a compact tractor loader with mulchers for the street department. You've got that information in your notebook.
This information's been on for a while. We've talked to the rest of them and I reckon you're sort of satisfied with what you heard and what you saw. You got any questions? Mr. Ray, again, I have answers, but we've been over to three times if this is something you need else you need.
Ray, I appreciate you all doing the multi-bid process here. It was very impressive and I liked the one you picked out. It's out the heist and it's what you guys need and it's what you put in this job.
This is something that was budgeted, it's in the budget, so this, this was something that was planned during the budget process. This is a piece of equipment that we've not had in the past. We were lucky enough, when we were evaluating the, the equipment last year, Ben had contacted the state and they brought one in and, excuse me, and did a little job for us to show us what all this could do. And so it was very impressive what could be done with this piece of equipment as far as cleaning up something and it's going to be a great addition to our, our equipment and we'll, we'll get a lot of use out of it. But it's something we've never had in the past and it's going to allow us to do some things we've been, we've had to do the hard way by taking a chainsaw and cutting it down and chopping it up and hauling it off and this thing just grinds it up and it's gone.
Did you make a motion?
I made a motion. You accept that, do you?
We got a second?
Take it.
Do a row call.
Alderman Jeff Fancher.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Mike Hansel.
Yes.
Alderman Bobby Knight.
Yes.
Alderman Steve Smith.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mike Profit.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ben, thank you for the job you've done.
Any comments from citizens? Oh, you got something?
Oh, thank y'all for the efforts, good equipment, it really helps the quit we're getting. Like I said, I've been here for years, we're finally getting some good equipment for it, but I appreciate it.
And not having to spend all your time repairing, being able to get things done, it's like our communication makes a big difference, Tom.
It does.
Thank you both for the job you do.
Well, you can see the difference in, in the job that's being done because I've had many comments about how good the parks look, about how good a lot of things look around town. Now, there's still more work to be done, sure, but it's a process and we're slowly getting to where we want to be. But just like the Bryantown Park, if you guys have been up by there, it's really starting to come together and I think we'll have that ready to go in just possibly a matter of weeks. And, and without the equipment that we had, we, we couldn't, I don't know that we could have done the project, we'd had to hire it all out and not done, done all the grading work and all that kind of stuff ourselves. So it shows you what the benefit of good equipment will do for you. And just like with this grinder, when we watched the state do that drainage pond up there next to Lowe's, that thing's huge and it didn't take any time for them to clean it. I mean, it looked like a woodland and it didn't take any time at all that they had that thing cleaned out and looked like a drainage pond again. And that's when we, we determined that, yeah, well, that thing would be a big benefit to us because it would have taken us probably days to clean that thing out by hand. And they did it in just a matter of a couple hours. So it's a, it's a, it's a big difference. It's a game changer, really.
I think any funding that we use that protects our citizens or helps to enhance the quality of life or beautify, however you want to look, I think that's, money is very well spent.
Amen, brother. As a citizen, I want to congratulate Mr. Tim Dockery. I wasn't at the game on Saturday, but must have been a pretty good feeling to watch your son run through the other end zone, probably getting booed at, but I'm sure you and your wife's, skin on your arms went up to attention. So I had a son get a championship ring for ETSU and it made me feel awful good, but watching, watching Dylan, where he's come from and where he's at and where he's going to go is even more impressive. That's, that's a reflection of his mother and dad. And we're sorry for the loss of your mother. I'm sorry, I'm sure we are as well, for the loss of your mother.
The support that we've had from departments, other departments and you as the council has been magnificent for us and our family and I really, really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I would like to thank Trey for being here, a candidate for this position and Lou Anna and Jeff and Jeff up here. And I would like to say this, because I might forget it at the next meeting, but this has been a great term for me to go out on because...
been a great term for me to go out on because these guys bit the bullet, they had to go up on taxes in order to have equipment because for years I saw nothing being accomplished because there was nothing to work with. And I appreciate them giving me a good term to go out on because I feel that things is starting now to move in the right direction and that's what it's meant to be. I'm a taxpayer. I pay taxes like everybody else and I like to see my tax dollars go to services. I mean, that's, that's what we pay them for. And I know these guys, the police, the fire, the street, parks, all of them, over my previous terms had absolutely nothing to work with. And you can't do a good job if you don't have equipment. And you can't keep good employees if you don't provide their needs. It's just the bottom line. But I always said when I do retire, I wanted to go out feeling that some things are starting to happen. Newport's a great place. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else. And I love the whole community. I love everybody. Y'all have been good to me and I hope I've just been a little bit of something that's been involved in trying to move our city forward, but, you know, you can't do it yourself. It takes the whole community. Whoever's sitting at this table has to make it happen and whoever works in, in all of our departments and our offices here at the city. But thank you all. I love you all very much and it's been a great run.
I've got a few words to say too, but there'll never be another Mr. Connie Ball. Mayor doesn't what he's done either for the City of Newport. I really appreciate him. All of us appreciate working with him. He's a good friend to work with and just wanted to tell you how much we appreciate what he's done too. I know it's a little premature, but I'll tell him now and I'll tell him next time too.
You'd probably forget like me if you weren't...
That's why I write my notes here.
Yeah, we're getting to that, eh? Okay, the last item on the bid, the agenda is comments from citizens. Anyone who got anything to say?
Yeah, I do, Connie.
Yes, Dan.
Your granddaughter told me I had, I seen her Friday night at the Walmart getting supplies to tailgate for Saturday's game and she told me I had them the wrong colors.
Yeah, I mean, she told me that she had took care of that.
My mother informed her that we had some.
Yes. She didn't understand that.
She didn't like it.
No. She would get weary. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, is anybody against it?
Second.
All right.